Call to order, the Saint Joseph City Council of April Monday, April fourth. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item two, public comments. Anyone wishing to address the city? Please step to the podium, name and address. This is your turn now.
I didn't realize it wasn't going to be my turn last time.
Now we know.
All right. My name is Evelyn DeSmidt. I've lived in the city of Saint Joe for almost twenty years. And I'm come to you this evening about a problem with my utility bill. In all the years that I've lived in Saint Joe, I have never not gotten a bill from the city. I'm not blaming this on the city that I didn't get a bill, but evidently there must have been something that went on with the mail. So I'm charged seventeen dollars and sixty-six cents extra on my utility bill. I'm a senior citizen living on a very fixed income. And I called and asked about this, and there was nothing that they were going to do about it. Okay, so between then and tonight, I have called Albany, I've called South Sartell, I've called Sauk Rapids. I've called all around to find out what other cities do about these utility bills. And every time that I talk to somebody at the city, they're saying the same thing, that you just can't trust the mail anymore. Usually, they give people a week, and then if they are late on their bill, they charge them twenty-five dollars extra. You know, I, I'm very prompt with my bills, and if you would look at my record in all the years that I've lived with the city, I don't not pay my bill. I pay all my bills. So I get this notice in the mail that I'm going to get disconnected and that I hadn't paid my bill, and I was absolutely, I just couldn't believe it. And I couldn't get ahold of anybody because it was on a Friday late, Monday they were closed because of holiday. So I'm here tonight asking for my seventeen dollars and sixty-six cents to be refunded. You know, I can understand that anybody owning a business, city whatever, that there are people that don't pay their bills. They're lax in whatever they do. I'm not one of those people. I need my seventeen dollars and sixty-six cents.
Thank you.
So now what?
Well, we'll take it under, we don't really respond to public comments. With public comments, it's not a discussion, it's really, you're telling us and then we'll take it under advisement.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the council? Public comments? See, no one else come forward. Item three, approval of the agenda? Motion and second approving the agenda? Issues or concerns? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item four.
I'll second.
Motion and second on consent agenda? Issues or concerns? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item five. Public hearing, special event, La Jam. Want to read it in first?
I'll do a quick overview.
Thank you.
So before you this evening is a special event permit request that was submitted by the owners of the La Play at Bar for their La Jam event, which is scheduled to happen on August twenty-sixth in their parking lot and then in the public alley. Foreplay would be the band performing from eight-thirty to eleven-thirty. And the request includes the ability to play after nine-thirty PM, which is in your ordinance, your special event ordinance, that you allow one event to play after nine-thirty PM. The alley closure request would go from noon on August twenty-sixth to six AM on the twenty-seventh. And as you can see in the map in front of you, so the green, the green line would be the fence, and then the red X's. This one here and that one there are emergency exits only. These black circles here are entrance and exit points. Let's see here. The application was reviewed by and the public works director and the fire chief. The police chief's main concerns were noise and then to have an evacuation plan in the event of some type of an emergency. Last Thursday, staff composing of myself, city administrator and police chief, as well as the mayor, met with the applicants and discussed these concerns. And that's why the additional emergency exits were added. And as the council, you do have the authority to put conditions on any permits that you approve. And the applicants are here this evening if you have any questions for them.
Very good. That being said, we're going to open up the public hearing, excuse me, public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak on the granting of special event permit for La Jam? Step to the podium. You don't have to if you don't want to.
Mayor, I do have one public comment that came in earlier today.
Let's read that in. The public hearing's open, so.
Yep. So it came from Kay Lemke, who lives at thirty-three Ash Street East. And she expressed her concerns regarding the noise levels of the event. Ms. Lemke stated that she is not opposing the event, but suggests the music be turned down at ten PM and done by eleven-thirty.
Very good. Thank you. You guys want to speak?
I guess in going through this and hearing some of the feedback from the council, also from different people in the city, we have reached out to the band, already had a discussion with them, discussed both the noise volume and the level of the bass, and pretty much told them, if we don't address it this year, they do have their own sound person, they're not going to be allowed to come back, number one, because we might not get a permit again, and number two, because we just don't want to put up with them not listening to our input on this event. We met with Dwight, as Kayla pointed out last week, and his concerns with emergency exits, and it was something that we hadn't really considered before. So it was definitely a good meeting and helped us kind of come up with this plan along with Kayla and Therese to get that implemented better this year. And we're also partnering with the Saint Joe Fire Department this year to do a fundraiser at the event. Basically, half of the ticket sales will go to Saint Joe Fire. So trying to be a good advocate and player in the community and do what we can to make this all go over without, with a minimum of contention, I guess.
And we also reached out to the Stearns County Sheriff's Department as well as another option to have more security, another car sitting out at the venue, just as a, you know, just presence is important to send them bright message that we are doing everything we can to make sure it's safe and secure. So that is an option that we are looking into as well. If the council feels like that's important, we will, we're more than happy to do whatever it takes.
Thank you, guys.
I have a question. So the two black X's, are you just going to have one entrance and one exit? Is that kind of your flow of how you're thinking about it?
Yes, so to mitigate some of the long line from last year, we decided to add a second exit, so that will be
Second entrance.
Sorry, entrance, excuse me. That will be managed by law staff.
Okay.
The entire.
So not just one entrance, correct? And one exit, so you'll have two, both?
And then the emergency exits will be very bright.
The red X is John, yep. So the circles are entrance.
The circles are entrances.
Okay.
And then the emergency exits will be very, very bright signage, so people will know what, in case there's an emergency, where to go.
So that second entrance exit, that circle that goes into the building?
That's a front entrance.
That's a front entrance.
So if I go in there, how do I get to the venue? Do I go through the back?
Yep.
Go through the back.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, there's a.
Yeah, I know where it is.
Okay. That being said, you guys can sit back. If we have further questions, we'll ask you. Thank you very much. That being said, we're going to close the public hearing and then open up the counselors.
Can I say just one more thing, Rick? I wanted to recite the Kevin Bacon speech in the Footloose council meeting, but Ann would let me, so.
Okay. Good choice, Ann. Counselors?
Well, I think the biggest thing, and we've talked about it, and obviously you guys are aware, last year was just the complaints about the noise. It looks like you've kind of taken some steps to hopefully mitigate some of that. I know some of the questions I know in talking and with the council is, is there opportunity to, you know, again, not play the music right up till eleven-thirty? Or start it earlier possibly and maybe end it earlier, still have people outside up until eleven-thirty, but try to mitigate it closer to that eleven-thirty time mark is just a thought, you know, trying to address some of the concerns from last year to move forward, to just even make it a better event. Those are just a couple of my comments, so.
Therese, did we get square footage?
Yeah, I did a measurement. It's approximately ten thousand square feet.
And that would hold?
Well, actually, what you do, and I should clarify, so in estimating, I don't know the size of the stage area, but if you, you know, you estimate nine thousand square feet, give or take. As far as like the fire code, you'd actually take the square footage and divide it by five, and that's your occupancy, which gives you eighteen hundred folks. So they're, they're fine. Big thing is the emergency exits. That's the big thing, is they need to have those. How they show them, that's what they need to do. So the other, you know, recommendation that you could have is a condition, they could have two or three fire extinguishers out there. That was a comment that was shared to me by an area city fire marshal.
I have a question for one of you, if you want to come to the mic. Would you consider changing your hours, like a half an hour? Like eight to eleven or something?
Yeah, we already planned on going eight to eleven.
Okay.
Yep, but, and that's where Teresa's talking about possibly leaving her job, was talking possibly having people stay outside a little bit longer so that they can filter out and there's not a rush out.
Sure. I mean, I know it says eight-thirty to eleven thirty in here. I prefer eight to eleven. Just only because I think closing that extra half hour would be really beneficial.
And again, at least then they can still be outside for that thirty, you know, thirty minutes and slowly kind of, instead of hard cut, get everybody out type of thing.
I'll move to approve. The plan as presented with the hours of eight to eleven. And hopefully, we don't have no noise complaints.
I'm sure we'll have some regardless.
Turning down the base would be a big one.
Second, motion and second, moving forward with a special event request for La Jam. Other concerns or questions? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion does carry. Thank you, guys.
Before we go to the second one, can I talk about this too as well?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. Sorry, oh, we're going to get that in. Sorry.
Yeah, just one thing, obviously, this has nothing to do with La Jam.
You guys are good.
As a council, I think it's pertinent to try and also look at our ordinances as well. I know we had some of the ordinance as they got brought up, and there's a lot of gray area that I think it's just pertinent for us as a council to maybe start looking at some of those a little closer so that we don't, I guess, get caught with our hand in the cookie jar. Because, you know, some of it's kind of subjective in my eyes.
I suggested to Therese at one of our next work sessions, we kind of break down what we looked at last session and try and put some more details to it if we can. I mean, I think if we do it here at a city council meeting, it would take up well beyond the eight-twenty start time.
Yep.
The other thing I was going to mention about this permitting process, this is the first time we've actually asked for like an emergency plan, extra exits and security. And so I've asked staff to include that in the form for every event going forward. What is your emergency? Chief brought up active shooter, but it could be a fight, it could be any kind of repercussion that would cause the audience to go crazy or the participants go to.
Spread.
Spread. So we've asked, I've asked them to include that in the form going forward. All right. Anything else on that? Item six, fire contract?
So as you are aware, as we discussed this at your last work session, the fire contract between the city, Saint Joseph and Saint Wendell Townships expires on July one of this year. So we would need to do a new contract. It just doesn't continue. So with that, I've had legal counsel take a look at that in regards to moving forward with having separate service type contracts. And I just want to make sure that the council is okay with that. So tonight, whether you do it by consensus or by motion, both would be fine, but to authorize me to work with legal counsel in drafting new service contracts and to present those to the townships. Lori has also been working with us as well in regards to the finance side of it for the ownership piece, which you have a draft copy of that agreement. So you can see that it talks about Saint Joseph Township having ownership interests.
Just Saint Joseph Township?
Just Saint Joseph Township and the city as well.
And how's that coming? I know that was written up decades ago.
The way the current contract reads, it talks about the fair market value at the time of one entity buying out the other entity. And it will depend on the current market value allocation at that time. So right now.
I was wondering about that.
Right. And so right now, Saint Joseph Township and Saint Wendell Township each pay about twenty percent, and we're at about sixty percent roughly.
So we're looking at like a twenty percent roughly, give or take, depending upon all the numbers come out. I'd move to authorize staff to go forward with trying to put together a fire contract. Bringing back a draft or whatever.
Yes, you would.
Motion and second, let staff move ahead with, again, input, or sorry, for new fire contract. All those in favor signify by aye.
Oh, can we stop and discuss?
Questions, concerns, my bad, Kevin?
Therese, do both townships have wind of what's going on?
They do.
And their reaction to date is?
So with Saint Wendell Township, the clerk has just shared, sent me a draft and I'll present it to the town board. Saint Joseph Township would like to continue with the same type of contract that we have in place today. But they are, so their board had discussed it and they would like to, for us to be with their board. So that's the next step.
Good. Thanks.
So, yeah, my question is, is if you're going through service contracts, we talk about this. I know there was talk about possibly not having a fire board or anything else, or moving forward, we still have contracts with the city. If you're saying Saint Joseph Township still wants to, would have twenty percent, but if Saint Wendell's not into that, would that increase for Saint Joseph Township? You know what I'm saying? I mean.
It would not.
Okay, just trying to kind of gauge if Saint Wendell's not in there for the ownership, that goes up obviously on us as well as the city.
No, they would only, they would only still be twenty, I don't know if you want to add anymore, but it would only be twenty percent.
Right, we would look at the allocation. Saint Wendell's never been an owner, so we kind of remove their their twenty percent out of the picture, so it's just between us and Saint Joseph Township.
With these new contracts, what does that do for the fire board?
It likely, service type contract would likely disband the fire board.
Okay, that's.
And to that end, we don't have a fire board anymore, but we would, as prudent, a prudent practice is we would still meet with or collaborate or communicate with both entities that have signed the contract. We just won't have a board anymore.
Well, actually, the council would have, the fire department would operate like any other department in the city and present the budget, and the council would go through that, so forth and so on, you know.
And I think we've kind of taken steps too to at least have a chief here from the fire department, so.
So the fire board, you know, there's be one last step to get through to get something done, or to get something bought or so forth.
Okay, that's all I had.
Okay, so my only question is, and I'm glad you guys tapped me, is it's April and this expires July one. Is that enough time? I mean, if township wants to meet with the board, last time we did that, it was, you know, an extended period of time of negotiation before we got anything done. I mean, what happens after July one if we don't have a contract in place? The remaining contract stays in place?
Third question. So trying to arrange it so we meet with them next week. You're, you're correct. I hope that we get something before July one.
You know, again, I'm just saying, if it goes by on July one, what happens?
We would still be providing fire service to them.
I know, but is the old contract then still in place?
It says it expires on July one. It doesn't automatically renew.
So somebody should actually check and see what happens, just in case we get behind July one and we don't have a contract. So, okay, thank you. Motion and second, move forward with a fire contract. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion does carry. Item seven, A.
Seven.
Seven, seven A. Good evening. Work has progressed on the 2022 street utility improvement plans. And considering your meeting cycle, we wanted to bring forth the resolution to the council to receive the plans and schedule the bid opening for the project, which I think you've seen your council packet resolution is scheduled for the end of this month, the twenty-eighth. So the action before the council this evening would be to receive the plans and schedule the public bid opening for the improvements.
Well, I move to approve resolution 2022-18 approving the plans and specifications and ordering an advertisement for bids for the 2022 street improvements.
Second?
Motion and second, resolution 2022-18 approving plans and specs. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
So as you recall, at least in terms of the sequence of the four-twenty-nine process, what we will be bringing back at a subsequent meeting then will be the resolutions where the city declares the cost to be assessed. And then we'll be scheduling the special assessment hearing. So sequence of events, bid opening, schedule the public, the special assessment hearing, go through that process, then award the construction contract. So a couple of sequences here that we'll need to follow over the coming weeks between your next meeting and the one in May. One other item that did come out last week, relatively short fuse. The congressional delegation has issued their, it used to be earmark description, now it's congressionally directed spending application. They have a relatively short fuse. It came out last week and they've got two weeks on the application. I don't, you can't.
I thought you were going to go blind there for a minute.
Little bit, but that's, that's much better. Thank you. The, what we are anticipating in terms of eligibility, as you're aware, the city has a bond, a state bonding request for the interceptor sewer. One of the things that we anticipate that you would be eligible for in terms of making this application for an earmark would have been the matching half or the other half to that state bonding ask. And so I don't think we're looking for necessarily council resolution or action as much as if there's consensus by the council, that staff follow up and submit an application. So wanted to raise this, raise awareness this evening because it's somewhat hot off the press.
Yeah, I'm all for that. I mean, I've looked over it. Actually, I was going to say, is there anything else besides that? Well, like industrial park expansion, water, stuff like that, and.
There are some limitations in terms of which water collector systems and interceptor systems are eligible. Smaller pipes, it tends to be rehab, rehabilitation of, you know, the old clay pipe. So in this case, because what we're talking about is a, as a large collector out to the gateway, we think it meets the definition. But from what we read in the application, anything smaller, if it's not a collector, would be on a rehab basis, not a new.
So the industrial park is not a collector scenario, all the expansion out there?
Depends on how far we want to, how far we want to define it.
Remember, we talked about all the way beyond.
I think we could make, if we're going to go all the way up to Mullen Road to the east side, then I think we could build a case that it's more than an eight-inch pipe, so.
Okay. Well, I just thought there, beside, I, we, I know we talked about going west, but I was just curious. What's some of those definitions?
So there, here's the limitation, or at least the concern is, in why we think it's been such a short fuse. The date says fiscal year twenty-three, and so they're looking for projects that a community can deliver in the next year. Now, we're, our funding folks are understanding that this, unless politically the tides change, this is going to be an annual activity. So we're expecting there'll be another solicitation this time around next year. So if there are other projects that need further development by the city so that we're ready to deliver in that same fiscal year, we'll have another opportunity to apply. So in this case, I guess this is why we were targeting the trunk sewer to, to the gateway area.
Very good. Yes, absolutely. Proceed. I mean, that's my opinion.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you.
Earmark money is good. Anything else, Randy? Okay, commission and board reports. Actually, I only have one thing from the park board. We had another member resign and another member apply, so we'll go through that appointment next week. But we're at full. That should make us complete at that point, okay? I don't think there were any other boards or commissions met in prior two weeks, so. My report is pretty simple. So I want to remind you guys or let you know of, the LMC legislative day got postponed, April twentieth. So I'm going to be setting up my own, I mean, the Coalition Day, I wasn't able to attend. The League of Minnesota Cities has the legislative day April twentieth. I'm normally down for that. They canceled it, so now it's a matter of setting up private appointments. I did also want to bring your attention to the Coalition, the league has its summer conference in Duluth this year. I'm not sure if you guys get the notice. I know Bob normally goes. I plan to go this year. The Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities also has a summer conference. This year it's in Red Wing, and their fall conference is in Alexandria. I'd encourage you, everybody that's new to attend one or the other or both, I mean, I don't know how we, what's in the per DM and stuff, but it's good for you guys to network with some of the people, it's counselors and mayors and administrators alike. So we should send out those dates. If, I can send them to you, or if you have them, I can, we can forward those to all the counselors. Randy R. talked about congressional directed spending. There's also a community project funding from Tom Emmer's office that I don't know who forwarded that to. You and you maybe? Therese and you maybe, Nate? Or you too maybe?
Well, it's related to the earmarks. I did see the one from Emmer's.
Yeah, okay. But it's not infrastructure. It's some other community project, blah, blah, blah. And, but if you looked at it, it was like fire department or fire hall or something like that. It was bigger structures. So I'd also like to, your guys' consensus to have staff look over that and see what's qualified for an application. It is. It's an earmark. It's on the Republican side of the house, not the Democratic side of the house, but. And the last thing I wanted to, I think I can go up and show people up there? Okay, really cool. I don't know if you guys got this note from Region seven W? Did anybody get notes from Region seven W?
No idea what you're talking about.
Say it again, Region seven.
Region seven W transportation.
That's part of the, part of it was.
Region seven W transportation. I'll see if I can bring it up. I'll see if I can plug in.
There you go, boy.
There. All right. So Region seven W is, this month has been, has been, let's go, man. Has been taking a transportation survey of hotspots in the area, and I can't really get anywhere because the network is so bad in here. All right, well, what, I mean, if I can't get there, you know, I'll wait a little. This is wireless, right? Oh, here we go. Okay. So out here is Region seven W Long Race Transportation Plan. And in Region seven W, Saint Joe and Saint Cloud and all these other things. And what you're allowed to do interactively, and I'll send you guys the link, what you're allowed to do is drive into any location. It's kind of cool. Like here's Saint Joe. And you open up a little dot, like. Let's see. Going farther and say, open a little dot, right, wait. Uh-oh.
You lost your dots?
I did. What happened? There we go. Anyway, allows you to go interactively and put comments in different intersections. And I just want to show you this one over here. So you have this location, you have Highway two passing through on ramps and cross traffic and blah, 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 regular there's traffic coming in from fifty-one wanting to go around, and then there's right turn getting to County Road. I'm not a fan of roundabouts, but this would be a great location for it. And so this map allows you to go to any spot. I'm going to show you one other here. Maybe not. Oh, well. Yeah, right there. This one here. This intersection desperately needs a right turn lane, especially when the tradition of three apartment complex is just south here. That's right in our own backyard by the Quick Trip. So this, I'll send you guys a link, and I'll send actually staff a link. This allows you to go in, put a little, you know, plus or minus sign. There's more minuses than plus, you know, this is really good intersection, or this is really good. There's only like one of them in this whole area. Everything is like. There's only like one of them in this whole area. Everything is like, fix this and fix this. And so, uh, this report goes to Region seven W Transportation, Min- Min- Region seven W Transportation. They take all these comments, they're gonna compile them all, and then they're gonna try and create, you know, some kinda word doc spreadsheet of. What do we have to work on in St. Joe and a few, I'll go out a little farther here.
So Rick, is this available to the public or just to people?
It came from, it came from our county, uh, Stearns County, so I don't know if I have it, because. It might have been an APO list, that's why I was surprised you might not have seen it, but it came from the county.
Okay, I just wonder who can comment. Anyone can, or just like people?
Well, I think, I think it's anybody, I think, I mean, you, you can put your name out there if you want to, I don't put mine out there, no, just kidding. But anyway, St. Cloud's been really, there, look at, one good green comment.
And down there by Ridgewood.
What's that say? Come on, let's go. I like that the school zone lights were added here. Ah, good job, buddy, this is safer. Anyway, so I'll send you guys a link, I'll send staff the link. It's a really cool thing and, um. It, again, I'm not sure how they're gonna take this, this interactive. Solution set that they're taking and compile the results and get it, but it'll come back to the APO for sure, and probably come back to Tac and everybody else in Stearns County to, to take a look at what's going on, so. Um, I'll send you guys the link, or I'll send, maybe I'll send it to staff, and staff, you can send it out. Um, there is actually a guide, if you don't know what you, you know, have you, it's really not that difficult to navigate, but there's a guide on there as well too, kinda of a tutorial.
Thank you for sharing that, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, and I didn't, you know, I didn't see where the original mail came from, but, um, I don't know what happened to that, but anyway. So that's my report. Any questions? Anybody? Questions of staff, anybody? Alright, item, uh, item ten.
I'll move to adjourn.
Second?
Motion and second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much. The hell, get kinda fucking excited here. La Jam.